Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday night Bible. We're coming to you from Scarborough Family Worship Centre, a ministry of the Church of God Prophecy, located at 6th Donaldo Christian in Scarborough, Ontario. We have been in the the letter to the Romans written by the Apostle Paul under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit. And we have so far covered six chapters. And we are on to the seventh chapter now. It's a deep study. There's a lot to be learned from this book. It is deemed as the cornerstone of the gospel. So you know, the cornerstone holds the words together. That's the purpose of a cornerstone. We, in our modern time, we see the column. The corner, it holds the two sides. If the columns or the cornerstone is not there, it will tumble over. So that's how Romans is feeding that to the as one of the letters and the Old Testament. So last week, we had the pleasure of looking at Romans 6, particular verses 14 to 23. And we were looking at the believers is not to continue in sin. And it was at three. And it was pointing out that we believers do not have a license to sin because God is gracious and will forgive us. If a believer does that, then they are not a true believer. They were not regenerated because God hates sin. God cannot coexist in a sinful environment. So because he's loving and forgiving, we should not take that for granted. We should not practice sin, work towards sin and to make it, to clarify a statement that we are all sinners. We have the sin nature in us. So we do fall into sin. And we need to understand the difference of falling into sin and practicing sin. The believer, the true believer, do not practice sin. They fall into sin because the sin nature is not. They are remorse, they pray, they ask for forgiveness. And they carry on the path of the journey of their faith in Jesus. But a person practices sin when they know that they're sinning, run towards it, does the sin, repeats on doing the sin. And might say, you know what, God is forgiving and he understands. And find all ways to rationalize the behavior of sinning or to justify your sinful behavior. But the true Christian who understands that Jesus died for our sin, the true Christian who knows that when we sin, we offend God. We offend a holy God when we sin. The scriptures actually would put Christ on the cross when we sin. So it shouldn't be something that we just do when we feel like and say, oh, the scripture says, the more we sin, the more grace may abound. It, it, that's a different understanding of that text. What it is saying, regardless of our sins, the grace of God is enough to cover it regardless. The more you sin, the deeper you're going to sin. You will never reach a, a, a state in sin where the grace of God cannot redeem you. So that's what it means. It doesn't mean that, oh, I can continue sinning. And the more I sin, the more grace is upon, the more grace flourish. That, that's not the right understanding. So, and what we did last week, we looked at the following verses. What in verse? So as I was saying, we can only serve one master. Either sin or God. Verse 17 to 18. We need to remember something. Remember your decision. You choose righteousness. It worked force on you. And because you chose righteousness, they accordingly to righteousness. Let, let us live a righteous life. Number verse 19 and 20. It shows that we need to do something. We need, as believers, we need to serve the, the, the Lord with the same passion that we serve sin. If you could recall back when you were living a sinful life and how you were passionate about what you were doing. We need to serve God with that same passion, not less. If we can even serve with more passion, that would be great. And what came to mind is Apostle Paul, who passionately killed Christian because he was, in his mind and in his idea of serving God, he was doing God a favor. But then when you met the risen Savior and repented and became a disciple of Christ, he had the same passion. The passion that actually lead led to his death. So, and verse 21 and 22. Question something means that what benefit is there in sin? What benefit? Now we need to ask ourselves those questions. What benefit? What does it profit us to sin according to the scriptures? There's no benefit. So we should fight against sinning. We should ensure that we don't give ourselves over to sinning. And a good way to go about that is to ensure that we practice the presence of God. We do our spiritual disciplines. We, 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 we walk in the spirit of terms. And that's, we're going to learn how to do that as a community of believers at this local church. We are going to try our endeavor to seek God right throughout our days, not just in our morning devotion, but right through. And the last section of chapter six we look at is consider something. We need to consider this, this particular verse of scripture. The wages of sin is death. If we continue sinning and not repenting and continue doing presumptuous sin, you know it is sin and you continue to walk straight into it. The payment you're going to receive is death. You're going to receive both spiritual debt and physical. But the gift of God is eternal, like through Jesus Christ. So that was what we did. And at this time, we're going to move on to this week's lesson. Taken from Romans seven, verse one to six. And the topic we're looking at is the two position of the law to man. We're going to look at the two position of the law to man. So access to May. So she's already unmuted to read for us Romans seven, verses one to six.
Yeah, Romans seven. Romans seven, verse one to six. An illustration from marriage. Do you not, do you not know, brothers? For I am speaking to men who know the law, that the law has authorized over a man only as long as he lives. For example, by the law, a married woman is bound to her husband as long as she is alive. But if her husband dies, she is released from the law of marriage. So then if she marries another man while her husband is still alive, she is called an adulteress. But if her husband dies, she is released from the law and is not adulteress, even though she married another man. Verse four. So my brothers, you also, you also died to the law, though the, the body of, of Christ that you might belongs to another, another, to him who were raised from the dead in order that we might bear the fruit to God. For, for when we are controlled by the, by sinful nature, the sinful passion arose by the law were at work in our bodies so that we bore fruit from death. Verse six and last. But now by the dying to, to, to what once bonds us, we have been released from the law so that we, so that we serve in the new way of the spirit and not in the old way of the written code. That's end of number six.
Yes, thank you. So the law of God stands before humans. It stands in two position that must be understood if a person wishes to secure peace in this life. The law stands in imposition. And it must be understood if any one of us wishes to secure peace in this life. So the, the text, verses one to six is outlined as follows. Verse one to three. The law dominates man. The law rule over man only as long as he lives. Man can allow the law to dominate them just as long as he's alive. Verse four. The law is dead to believers. To the true believer, the law has died. The law is dead. Verse, verse five. The law is alive to those controlled by the sinful nature. The law is alive to those who are controlled by the sinful nature. And verse six. The law is inactive. Dead, inactive by conversion. When we are converted, Christ, the law is inactivated. There no more law. Then the law is not abolished. The law comes from God. So it is, it had its purpose and you'll see that. But we are no longer living under the law. Christ fulfilled the law. And we who place of faith in Christ, no place of faith in the law fulfiller. So we in turn fulfill the law to Christ. No human being that have studied time and time again was able to fulfill 613 laws. And if you break one of those 613 laws, you are a law breaker. It was only God himself crowed in flesh. Spirit rode in flesh, came into our world and lived the perfect life, the ideal life, and was able to take our sins to the cross. So the first sub edit is that the law dominates man only as long as he lives. And the text for that is Romans seven, verse one to three. I will just read it. Then I be as it like this. Do you know, brothers and sisters? For I am speaking to those who know the law, that the law has authority over someone only as long as that person lives. For example, by law, a married woman is bound to her husband as long as he is alive. But if her husband dies, she is released from the law that binds her to him. So then if she has sexual relations with another man while her husband is still alive, she is called an adulterer. But if her husband dies, she is released from the law and is not an adulterer if she marries another man. So law, the law dominates and rules over a person only as long as he or she is alive. The law applies only to the living. Let us get that, only to the living. It has no bearing whatsoever upon the dead. A dead person is free from the law. It is, it has no jurisdiction or power over a dead person. I want you to know two position of the law that is illustrated by the law of marriage. And that is in verse two of the text. One, the law is alive or active to the living. The law is dead or inactive when death enters the picture. Note also in verse, at the conclusion, verse three. The law and then the living who violates it. If you break the law, this is what it's saying, it condemns you. The law has no grace in it. The law is black and white. Either you, you, you obey or you are condemned. Death frees a person from the law. We want you to understand those position. The point is clear. When death enters the picture, a person is no longer under the law. He can no longer be condemned by the law. Death forever frees a person from the law, from the demands of the law, from the guilt of the law and from the condemnation of the law. The second sub edit is the law is dead to believers. And most of us, or if not all of us are believers. And I want us to really take this in. So Romans seven, verse four reads, so my brother and sister, you also died to the Lord through the body of Christ. That's how we died to the law. That you might become to another, to him who was raised from the dead in order that we might bear fruit for God. So we believers are to bear fruit for God. And we belong to another, to him that was raised from the dead, who was first Jesus. The first position of the law is a glorious truth. The law is dead to brothers, to believers. Note, scripture says that believers are dead to the law. Whereas the outline we're looking at states that the law is dead to believers. Both are true and are saying the very same thing. From whatever angle you want to look at it, the law is dead to the believers and believers are dead to the law. The law has no jurisdiction, no power, no rule, no authority, no domain over a true believer. Remember, there are believers who are not true. Most of these believers who are not true, they are mediocre believers. And they find reasons to, 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 to break God's commandment. And they don't take their Christianity very serious. They're not true. And it's hard to say, they, they, they unbelievers, those who are in the world, the unsaved, they see Satan will put more of those persons in their line of vision to say that this person is not living a life. You are even living a better life than this person who called himself or herself a Christian. So the, the text, the, the, the lesson, keep talking about true believers. The law is dead, is a, the, the law is a dead issue to the believer. It has nothing to do with the believer. The believer is dead to the law and the law is dead to the believer. The law, everybody does not exist for the believer, the true believer. You can't try to keep the law. No man was able to do. And when a believer tries to keep the law, you've nullified the work of God, the work of Christ and the cross. This is a shock to most people, but it is exactly what scripture is declaring. The believer is no longer under the law and is and is, and it's accusing the believer. The law points out here, you, you, you sin. That's what the law does. No longer under its guilt and shame, condemnation and punishment, discouragement and frustration, tension and pressure. All of these are what the law does. Sense of failure and unworthiness, sense of disappointment. Note two things. How the glorious truth become a reality in the life of a person? The glorious purpose for the believers dead to the law. We're going to look at those persons. Note the glorious truth comes to a reality in a person's life. The believer is dead to the law by the crucified body of Christ. And so we're looking at, at, at all this truth that the law is dead. How it comes to reality. And one other point is that the believer is dead to the law by the crucified body of Christ. The believer is put to death in Christ. We are put to death in Christ. When Christ died, we died with him for those who believe in him. And that's how the Father sees us. The law has nothing to do or to say to a dead man. The believer's death in Christ is a vicarious death. He does not literally die himself. Okay. But he participates in the death of Christ. He parts, he participates in the death of Christ spiritually. When a person believes in Christ, that God takes that person's belief and counts it as having died in Christ. So it's all about our belief, our faith in Christ. That is, God counts the death of Christ for the death of the believer. God considered the believer to have been in Christ when Christ died. Why does God do this? Why, why would God do something like that? Because Christ died on a person's behalf, on people's behalf, in a person's stead, in the person's position, taking the penalty of position and punishment of the law upon himself. That's what Christ does. So that's why God considered our death as us being dead in Christ. Therefore, the believer being dead in Christ is freed from the law. Because you're dead in Christ, you're free from the law. The law has no effect on a dead person. You're free from the law, free from the demands of the law because the law said, you should die when you sin. That's what the law said. And the law has no form of grace to say, you know, I, I forgive you. No, that the law, the law points us out. That's what it does. But it cannot save you from the sin. You remember the woman? As I said before, the woman who was taught in adultery? Christ knew that she was supposed to be thrown to death. Christ knew because that's the law. But it is infinite wisdom. As being full of God and full of man, full of God in the flesh, he asked a question. The person who is without sin cast the first stone and everyone moved away. The believer is freed by the body of Christ. That is, by his freeing body, by his death. Now, this is how it comes to life. Christ redeemed the believer from the law by being a curse. So this is how the, that great, that this glorious truth is coming into reality that we can understand. Christ redeemed the believer by, from the law by being a curse. In Galatians three, verse 10, now verse 13, it reads, for all who rely on the works of the law are under a curse. For all who rely on the works of the law are under a curse, as it is written. Curse is everyone who does not continue to do everything written in the book of the law. And because we cannot do everything, we are cursed. Because no one could fulfill the 613 laws. Verse 13 said, Christ redeemed us from the curse of the law by becoming a curse for us. So we, we, we are to be careful when we deny the finished work on the cross that Jesus did of the cross because he became the curse for us. For it is written, curse is everyone who is hung. For it is written, curse is everyone who is hung on a pole. Curse is everyone who's um, on a pole. The next point is Christ redeemed the believer from the law by his blood. Ephesians one verse seven states, in him we have redemption through his blood, the forgiveness of sin in accordance with the richness of God's grace. Uh, you, you want to say something, Sister?
Yeah.
Girl? Try to hold a knife at me, could.
When I was back in the island as a child and somebody hung themselves on a tree. A person would climb a red fruit tree and put a rope around their neck and
Yeah, yes, yeah.
And they would say it's because they are cursed while they do that. So that is like marching with this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And um, another scripture, Ephesians two verse thirteen reads, were concerned as to redeem the believer from the law by his blood. This read, but now in Christ Jesus, you who once were far away have been brought near by the blood of Christ, by the blood of Christ. And another point is that Christ redeemed the believers from the law by his flesh. And Ephesians two verse fourteen, fifteen reads, by setting aside in his flesh the law which with its command and regulation. His purpose was to create in himself a new humanity out of the two just making peace. So he set aside in his flesh the law and its command and regulation. And for a purpose to create in himself, to create in himself Christ, a new humanity. Remember, the scripture says we are a holy nation, royal, pretty soon, God's very own people are peculiar people. We are a new humanity in Christ, a holy nation. I mean, cannot continue to live like the pagans or the unbelievers or the Gentiles. We have to live in Christ, live in Christ. We are called to live in Christ. Another point is Christ redeemed the believer from the law by the cross. And Ephesians two verse sixteen reads, in one body to reconcile both of them to God through the cross by which he put to death their hostility. And the other point, the last point concerning Christ redeeming the believer. This one is from the law by the body of his flesh. And Proverbs one verse twenty-two says, but now he has reconciled you by Christ's physical body to death, to present you holy, to present you holy in his sight without a blench and free from accusation. Isn't that an awesome place to be in, silly to be, to be free uh, from accusation? That's why when the enemy accuses us, if we don't study the word of God and be exposed to these kind of teachings, the enemy is going to find joy in accusing us. But we are free from accusation because we are in Christ. You don't have to worry about keeping the law, as long as you put your faith in Christ and walk as he commands you to walk. You have, you, you don't have to worry about the law. Because you fulfill the law, Christ, you won't be stealing. The ten commandments are not the only law, but you won't be stealing. You won't be putting a, a, a false guard before you. You won't be committing your neighbor, you won't be committing murder. A true believer don't do that. So you see how it's important for us to place our faith in Christ and start trying to keep the law. Oh, because I don't kill anyone, I'm okay, but you're lying. Or because you don't like to commit. But when you, and we will fall into those kind of sins. But now we have the grace of God that will forgive us and will carry on on our Christian path. But the law, he said, no, you're lying, you're stealing, committing murder, die. So why would we want to still live under the law when there is grace? And we still have this in nature now, so we still are going to commit, still. Here is some equivalent expression that teaches the same truth. Christ bore our sin in his own body upon a tree. First Peter two verse twenty-four, he himself bore our sin in his body on the cross so that we might die to sin and live for righteousness. By his wounds you have been healed. His suffering justified, sorry, suffering stand and satisfies justice. His death makes us acceptable to God and deliver us from the penalty of the law. Therefore, the believer is free from the law. First Peter three verse eighteen, for Christ also suffered, for Christ also suffered once for sin, the righteous for the unrighteous. Bring you to God, Christ bring you to God. He has put to death in the body, but made alive in the spirit. Now we want to look at this glorious purpose for the believer's debt to the law. We will look at the purpose. We just look at how it is realized, or we can truly understand the truth that the law is dead. And we see all what Christ did in his body by his blood, uh, being a curse. Now we want to look at the purpose. The believer, uh, um, the believer dies to the law so that he can be united to Christ. Then if we as believers are still trying to keep the law, we are putting a separation between us and Christ. You know, so the believer dies to the law that he can be united to Christ, the risen and live in Lord. Note the picture of marriage is used again. Before coming to Christ, the believer was married and united to the law.
We're not hearing you.
You weren't hearing me all this time?
No.
Okay. Well, you know what? This came into my spirit and um, I'm not trying to be overly spiritual, but normally we start off, the Bible study, my train. And I've got so, I went late to see when I, you know, I was trying to get online, we didn't pray. So I don't know, you know, not freezing the enemy, but we do not do what we normally do invite God in the midst. So heaven and earth in the name of Jesus, come before you, God. You realize, God, that we did not come and invite your holy presence to be with us, to be guiding us, to be the one teaching us. So Father, this time, it, it came into my spirit, Lord, that reminded me that that wasn't done. Father, we, we, we don't take things for granted. The enemy of God is just here to disrupt and don't want this teaching to reach your people. Father God, I pray that you will guide us, go ahead of us and teach your people in Jesus's name. Amen, amen. So um, all I've been saying, um, you guys didn't hear. So I'm going to go back to the top again to ensure that um, we all get this picture. So we're looking at the glorious, the magnificent purpose for the believer's debt to the law, the great purpose. And believers die to the law so that they can be united with Christ. They can be united with Christ, united with the really good Lord. And we're looking at marriage, a picture of marriage um, that before coming to Christ, a believer was married to the law, united to the law. He or she was under the rule of the law and the authority of the law. But now since coming to Christ, we still are married. But we're married and united to Christ. And it's under Christ's rule and authority, not under the rule of the law, but Christ. The believer no longer lives as the law says. But we now live as Christ lived and commanded. We have to live as Christ lived. There's no truth about it. Christ came to fulfill the law. Therefore, he and his commandment included not only the law, but much more. And Louis, you can look at um, uh, Matthew fifteen, sorry, Matthew five verse seventeen to eighteen. Note that believers are married to Christ, the risen and the living Christ. The marriage is not a dead or inactive marriage, but a living and active marriage. For Romans seven verse four, that we just read says, so my brothers and sisters, you also die to the law through the body of Christ that you may belong to another, to him who was raised from the dead in order that we might bear fruit for God. The second thing concerning the purpose of the believer dying to the law. The law dies, the believers die to the law so that he can bring forth fruit unto God. Bearing fruit would mean be a righteous man. Romans six verse twenty-one to twenty-three says, what benefit does you reap at that time from the sins you are now ashamed of? Those things result in death. But now what you have been set free from sin and has become slaves to God, the benefit you reap leads to holiness. And the result is eternal life. For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life in Christ Jesus, oh Lord. So probably speaking, probably speaking, we should not worry about being slave for God. The, 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 the word slave brings on a negative connotation. But being a slave for God is different because it reaps, it leads us to holiness and the result is eternal life. Yeah. Um, bearing fruit means bear convert. Remember when we did John, John fifteen verse sixteen? You did not choose me. That's what Jesus said. I, Jesus, chose you and appointed you, approved you, ordained you so that you might go and bear fruit. Who that was, that will last. And that was referred to converts. So we as believers, we need to replicate, reduce, reproduce such it say. And I mentioned that because as a church and we will be planting churches in the near future. And it is said that a church that does not reproduce itself is not a healthy church. So we are on a path right now to become a healthy church. And just, just let you know, last night I was in training for that very reason. And that was my last class and I have now have my certificate that I completed course in a healthy church dynamic. And these courses is going to be part throughout this local congregation and other local and other congregation, because the church needs to make disciples. And we can't just stay here at sixty percent of the present and the disciple people up in Vorn or, you know, they hear more than I do. Over by Sister Jenny there and you know, we need to plant churches. Churches are pockets of light in a dark world, but we have to first be healthy. We, we want healthy churches. And the curriculum is all there for all of us. And I'm just praying that we become teacherable, we, we, we become excited about planting churches and we uh, give up ourselves that we can be taught. There's a lot of pastors before me here, because there'll be another church, we mean people. But it can't be the same old same. We, we live in a different time and we have to do what is right. We're not watering Dr. Gospel, but we will have to unpack the word for Christ. So we were appointed so that we might go and bear food, food at last. And so that whatever you ask in my name, the Father will give you. Whatever you ask in the name of Jesus, the Father will give you. And the thing about it is that our God is faithful and just. And if we're not receiving the things from him we ask for, our God cannot lie. He's not a human that he lies, he's not a, 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 a man that he changes his mind. But something is not right in the equation. Remember when we do Romans one, that the wrath of God is being revealed from heaven among those who are unrighteous, those who are wicked and those who are suppressing the truth. We have to look into ourselves and see why. We have to look into ourselves and see why we ask God for things. And it has to be within his will. We can't just go asking for stuff that will affect us negatively in our Christian work. And then we say, oh, we asked God for this and he did not give it to me. You're not gonna get it. It has to line up within as well for us. Okay, so let me carry on here. Bearing fruit means to bear Christian character. The fruit of the Spirit. Galatians five, twenty-two to twenty-three, everyone knows that. But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, love, suffering, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, self-control. Against Dutch, there is no law. You can get into trouble when you do all those things. You know, um and Proverbs one, verse ten said that you may walk worthy of the Lord, fully pleasing him, be fruitful in every good work and increase in in the knowledge of God. So we'll come on now to the third section. We had a few eucuts. Uh we have thirty three minutes to finish that, but I think we're going to make it through. The third, oh, edit, is the law is alive to those controlled by their sinful nature. Believers, we cannot allow our sinful nature to control us. You know, yes, you'll fall into sin, but to control you is a bitter statement. We cannot allow our sinful natures. We have this nature in us. Please accept that. If you don't accept that, then you're gonna fall to 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 sin just easily. But when you know you have the nature in you, you guard against against it. You oppose anything you know that God doesn't wish for you, don't do it. There are times you will give in your sin by your thoughts. You think, yes, you don't know the sin that is lurking in your heart according to Psalm nineteen, verse twelve. You don't know that sin that is lurking in your heart. We do feel, but we have an advocate with the Father. So we should live a repentant life. You know, as often as we can go to God and say, Lord, forgive us for our sins. Do it. You want to keep us clean straight. You ask him to wash you in the blood ten times for the day. You want, you don't know when he shall appear. You don't know when you're gonna take your last breath. And if we die outside of Christ, where shall we be? You know, so we want to ensure, we don't want to take it for granted. We know that he's a loving, forgiving, um God who loves us without uh unconditionally loves us. But we wanna be sure that we're walking daily in the spirit of God and being used to multiply to have unto his kingdom. I mean, by the way we live, people can see and you know, come to God. Say, I just wanna be like doing so. So um Romans seven, verse five. And from where we look at the law is alive to those who are controlled by their sinful nature. Read it in the NIV. For when we were in the realm of the flesh, the sinful passions arose by the law were at work in us so that we bore fruit of death. So just looking at this text, when we were in the realm of the flesh, we as believers are no longer to be in the realm of the flesh. So when we were there, our sinful passion and that sinful passion, that sinful passion arose by the law. The sinful passion arose by the law was at work in us so that we bore will bear fruit of death. That's what we were doing when we were living in the flesh. The the second position of the law, of the law is a warning. The law is alive to those who are controlled by the sinful nature of man. A natural man is the man in the flesh, in the flesh. That is the man without Christ. A man who has not accepted Jesus Christ as their personal Savior. And there is no in between. If you are not accepting as your personal Savior, you are against him. How could you not accept such a good thing? How could you not accept life over death? So the person who is without Christ is a man in the flesh, the man that is unsaved, the man that is unjustified and is the ungenerated man. Being the fresh means that that person is still under the law. That he must keep his demand and suffer its guilt and bear its punishment because that's all the law does. There's no grace under the law. No two significant points. The law is alive and active to the person without Christ. And number two, the law of refusing, sorry, the result of refusing to obey the law is that one bears the fruit of sin. So if you refuse, that means if you break the law, the person who breaks the law bears fruit of sin. So let us look at these two points. The law is alive and active in that it points out sin and it stores guilt within a person who violates the law. It points out the sin to you and and it stores the guilt. You you know, uh that's why uh the believer shouldn't have any guilt because the guilt comes from you living under the law. So when you violate the law, then the guilt rises in you and it points out the sin in you. But if you're so in Christ that when you mess up, they go to Christ, says, Christ, I messed up again. Wash me in your blood, cleanse me and forget about breaking the law. Because God, Christ knows you're gonna break the law because you what, you have this sin nature in you. But you now should know that you're not gonna presumptuous and just break the law as you like. Because every time you do that, it's like you're putting back Christ on the cross and you are offending our holy God. So don't use this as a loophole, the sin. And that's the fear that probably this is not taught like this because some person might now say, you know what? Um I I I'm gonna be fucking, so anyways, I can sin. No, probably you will never, ever redeem. You never place your faith in Christ alone. Because the scripture said, through the law we become conscious of our sin. Romans three, verse twenty B. Romans five, verse twenty-eight said, God's law was given so that all people can see how sinful they were. It cannot help you, but it shows you where you are. And Romans seven, verse seven. What shall we say then? Is the law sinful? It's question, is it all sinful? Certainly not. Apostle Paul said, nevertheless, I would not have known what sin was had it not been for the law. Before the law was given, when someone, you know, someone, when someone steals, when someone do anything a a a against what the law points out, they didn't know they were sinning. Because there was nothing to tell them. Because Apostle Paul contains it, Father, I would not have known what coveting really was if the law had not said, you shall not commit. Simple put, the law was given for us to know how sinful we are. It was given to redeem us from from sin. And if you were to go back and think about what happened in the Garden of Eden when Adam and Eve stinted, what did God say right there to the serpent? It seemed that the woman is gonna crush, you know, crush me, squeeze out every life out of your head. You're gonna bruise it. You're gonna bruise his ear, but he's gonna crush you. So this is what Christ did on the cross. He ripped Satan of his dominion. And now he is our second Adam. And we need to put our faith in Jesus Christ more than a hundred percent. If it is humanly possible, walking and believe step by faith. It it might have frightened me in the beginning. But you need to make the declaration and live by it. Make those declarations and live by it. The law is alive and active in that it awakes sinful passion or patterns of sin in us. It's alive, it awakes those passions in us. It it there's no way, remember there is, it's black and white, there is no in-between. There is no way the spirit of God, holy, divine God is gonna awake in us sinful actions. It must be the law. The law not only points out sin, it also actually stimulates feelings and store the emotion to prove the forbidden. So for the sinful things produced by the law in the members of our body, when the law prohibits or forbids something, it actually creates it within us and it's just in that thing. Somebody talking. This is true. It creates an interesting thing that you're not supposed to do. No, it creates an interest in it, an attraction, a a a an excitement about the thing, an appeal, a tug, and a pull. It creates a a fascinate, a a a subduction, a fascination. And our rules are to do the same very thing the law tells you not to do. There is within man something, there's, there is within us something that makes us want to do what we are forbidden to do. There's something in us. As a young man, I can say yes to that. There's something in us, the the brokenness, the depravity. And this is all caused by sin, why we do those things. When a man is restricted or fenced in, he wants to break through the restriction of the fence. No, we don't love that. We want to go beyond where we are allowed control, to take control of our own life as we wish and will. We don't want to stay in the confines of Christ and what he allows us to do. We want to just go there, do all kind of stuff, which is against the will of God. There's something in us and it's caused by sin, why we end up doing those things. It is a powerful phenomenon, powerful. Still not something we should literally play with. It will hold you, grab you, you get bonded. Apostle Paul said in just a long, the very appearance of sin, we are to shun. Avoid the appearance of sin. I I normally say, I don't know if we're so perfect, but this should be approached. If it looks like sin, if it smells like sin, run. Run. Because you don't know how deep you're gonna fall into this thing and the impact it's gonna have on your life. And not only your life, on your generation. This generation of curse that is coming down because of our forefathers um behavior. You know, you say indulge it. And 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 we have to come to that place, we'll break that curse and do it goes to our children and our grandchildren. Romans seven, verse five said, when we were in the realm of the flesh, um the sinful passion arose by the law were in us and so we bore death. I think I'm going back over what I did. So we're at the second thing now that the result of refusing to obey the law is that one bears fruit of sin. When a person violates the law, when we break the law, the written code, we bear transgression and sin. And then sin leads to death. In fact, sin deserves death. Romans five, verse twelve. When Adam sinned, sin entered the world. Adam sin brought death, so death perjured everyone for everyone's sin. This is it. Adam was a federal head of humanity. And when he sinned, everyone's sin. Well, I'm at the last portion with seventeen minutes to go. That's good. And this last portion speaks to the law is inactivated by conversion. Inactivated means that it's stopped, it's not active anymore. When something is inactivated, uh it comes to an end. Okay, so Romans seven, verse six said, but now by dying to what once bound us, we have been relieved from the law so that we can serve in the new way of the Spirit and not in the old way of the written code. Um the law is inactivated by conversion. Believers, each one of us are delivered. That is, we have been discharged from the law. You know, when you have property and you pay the mortgage on it and you finish paying off the mortgage, the mortgage is discharged. You go to a legal process and where the mortgage was recorded and the title, you see it is from discharge. So we, the believers, are delivered. That is, we have been discharged from the law. How? How are we discharged from the law? I'm saying these things, does it make sense? We're discharged, but how? How? By our debt in Christ. By dying in Christ, we are discharged. The believer is free from the law so that he might serve in the newness of spirit. Come on. We now serve in the newness of spirit and not by the oldness of the letter. The oldness of the letter refers to the law. It is the written law which a person tried to keep. It is the written law which a person tried to keep in order to please God. It's the written law that a person tried to keep. But note, the law was the old way for people to live. It's no longer the way for a person to approach God. The coming of Christ was revolutionary, revolutionize everything. That's the difference. The newness of spirit referred to either the Holy Spirit or the believer's new spirit. They will get a new spirit when we praise our faith in Christ. The Holy Spirit is the one who brings new life to, to the believer and bears fruit within the believer. It's the Holy Spirit that does that. And you see why it is so the scripture talk about the blasphemy, the Holy Spirit, that sin was never forgiven. You know, because it's the Holy Spirit that brings new life to you. And if you renounce him, say he's not there, he's not a person, he doesn't exist, he's not God, I don't think you are walking on some narrow, narrow bridge. You know, because it's the Holy Spirit who actually took you to Christ. So how can he not be there? If he's the one who pulls the grass. The newness of the Spirit, I said, referred to the Holy Spirit. The believer's new spirit is also focused upon God, our redeemed spirit. Remember, look at it like this. A human is combined with the God and the spiritual. Our spirit man outside of Christ is dead. So we have a lot of half-human running around the place. Cause they are physically alive but spiritually dead. They're half-humans. So, and they're like, in, 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 in prayer, Bible study, i- i- it's good to them that they're like animal. They have no spirit, cause the spirit is not alive. So, the, the believer's new spirit is also focused upon God and upon the relationship with God. The believer is now a child of God, adopted in the family of God, a true member of God's family who has open access. We have open access in the presence of God. Anytime and under any condition, the believer have open access, have a father. You can run into him anytime. Into the Holy, Holy, where the priest used to go under the law once per year, have a rope tie around his waist and some bell hanging on his coat, that when he moves around, you can't move, that he's still alive. If the bell stop, if you're across that, they're taking long, a loud song, all of them hit the ground at the same time. You start pulling the rope, cause he's dead in the presence of God. We now can go in the very presence of God, offered under the righteousness of the Lord Jesus Christ. Because we praise our faith in Christ, I would not do in the law. Believer needs to serve God knowing, this is important to past believers. The believer needs to serve God knowing, knowing that if he fails, so that believer knows that they have the sin nature in them. And knowing if they fail, God will forgive him and allow him to continue on as if nothing had ever happened. Wow. Now, if someone want to take that for granted now, and the, oh, God is gonna pretend ours, nothing happened. So therefore, you're never saved. You were never redeemed, you, you weren't serious. You, you, you were playing around. But if we fail, if we stumble and fall, I can someday. If we stumble and fall, God will forgive us and allow us to carry on that Christian pathway as if nothing happened. What a loving God, man! Why aren't we sold out for him? The fact that God would do that, why are we holding back? Why are we holding back? Knowing that God would do that for us. The believer no longer served God in a legal and slavish spirit that moves into discouragement and defeat, but he served God in the new spirit of joy, love, peace, forgiveness, and acceptance. Why do we find in this crystal, we find it so hard to forgive after we are lavish with this kind of grace? Come on, people. Come on, I'm gonna leave with you a few verses. Cause I'm at the end right now with eight minutes to go, thank you, Jesus. Romans eight, verse thirteen to seventeen reads, for if you live according to the flesh, you will die. But if you, but if by the spirit you put to death the misdeeds of the body, you will live. I, I just wanna interject here. This is the word of God. And friends, if any of you have issues with the Bible being the word of God, you're in big problem. If you have any concern, you need to discuss it with your pastor or the elder, and let us look at the reliability of the Bible. There's a lot of misinformation out there. But this is the word of God. If you live according to the flesh, you will die. But if by the spirit you put off, you put to death the misdeeds of the body, you will live. For those who are led by the spirit are the children of God. I always refer to this, this, this verse, those who are led. Sister Shaw, I'm not supposed to tell the story, but the night crowd. Legalism, although I cheer for you, and if I hear that you're going there, I will, I will sit down, try to encourage it. But the spirit of God is leading you, you know what? That's why we're not to, um, judge people wrong for it. And that's right, cause you know, what if the Holy Spirit, Sister Shaw, who are night crowd? In Sister Shaw, you are certain that you, you hear clear, and just confirm that you are, I don't know the names up there, but one downtown. The, the spirit that's sitting there, because there's somebody there that needs to receive it. And you go down there and you, you went inside, and you buy a bottle of water. And you suck in your water, and that bring that person to you, and you were able, under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit to talk to the person or whatever. And then somebody, still you're coming out of the nightclub, I said, queer.
Brilliant.
Sister Shaw, but if you do the good of the person, come to Sister Shaw.
Yes.
Sister Shaw, out of love, I'm coming to you. I, I, I saw someone like you exiting a nightclub. I'm not even absolutely sure it's you, but I, 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 I just wanna, I said, you know, yes, it's me. The Lord bids me to go, but the person go outside, say to Sister Shaw, that's gossip. No, Sister Shaw, you need to send the person to you.
Yeah.
And that's how the gossip ends.
Yeah.
You know, but those who are led by the spirit are the children of God. The spirit you receive does not make you slave so that you live in fear again, rather, the spirit you receive brought about your adoption to some shit. And by him we cry, have a father. The spirit instead testified with our spirit that we are God's children. Now, if we are children, then we are years. If we're children, uh, what our parents owns is ours as well. So that's why we are called here to Christ. Anything Christ owned, we were adopted in the family, we were not begotten. He has only one begotten son, but we through legal adoption, we are adopted in the family, so we are joined by years of God, four years with Christ. If indeed we share in his suffering in order that we might also share in his glory. And this section of scripture developed people trouble, cause they don't want to share the suffering, but they want to share in the glory. And, um, second Corinthians five verse fourteen to fifteen reads, for Christ's love compels us, all is saying this, for Christ's love compels us. For Christ's love, the love we have for Christ and the love that he has shared to us. Because we are convinced that one died for all, and therefore all died. For he died for all so that those who live should no longer live for themselves, but for him who died for them and raised again. We are not to live for ourselves, brothers and sisters, we are to live for God who died and re- raised again. And second Corinthians five verse seventeen said, therefore, if anyone is in Christ, the new creation has come, the old has gone, the new is here. We are a new creation in Christ, thank Jesus for such wonderful words. I, I, I just pray that I, I do appreciate the turn on the support um, that you guys are giving this ministry Bible studies. But I'm praying that you really are taking, taking it in, reading scriptures for yourself. Everyone should try, when you can, to get a commentary, uh, a Bible commentary. You, you have some one that is just one Bible commentary for the entire Bible. You have some that, some that are like for each book of the Bible, it depends on your affordability. Get a Bible dictionary and do your own studies. We will have to probably do a course, a, 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 a church here, like what you call a seminar, that we can show people how to do Bible studies. We need to, when you build up on these words, man, um, you're on solid ground. You're not shaky, uh, things don't bother you, you don't worry. Why, why is the Christian worrying? Why a Christian worry when Christ did it all on the cross of Calvary for us? Let us be firm, and let us, um, get into the knowledge of Christ. Let us, um, get rid of some, um, old tales and some tradition that you catch. If you have an argument and you don't have the, the evidence, it's no argument. It's something that comes out the top of the head of someone. Okay? You have to have biblical evidence for anything that you are, you, you are proposing, okay? We've come to the end of tonight's study, and I just wanna thank each and every one of you. And, um, who would like to just close off in prayer? Someone online, could you just unmute your mic and just close off in prayer, please?
Oh dear heavenly Father, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you from the depth of our hearts. You are the King of glory, you are strong and mighty in battle. And so, Lord, here we are as your people, we need you every hour. And truly, we can find you through your precious word. Oh Lord, the word that is written for our learning. I thank you, Lord, for your servant who hath dedicated himself, Lord, to seek all your direction and to speak to us, Lord. I pray you would bless him. But more than all, I ask, oh God, that your word will reach each and every one of us, that it may develop and deliver the rest in our soul, and that we'll find peace with you. We thank you for each one who are online this evening. We also thank you for those who are in house. Oh God, and as we're bowed, Lord, to see where from one another this evening, may your peace rest with us. May you give us all a blessed night, rest as we meditate, meditate, oh God, and digest your word. We thank you for everything now and praise you in Jesus' name, amen and amen. Thank you, Lord.
Before you go, be reminded that we have our annual general meeting this Sunday. It is for members, please to come out and, um, play your part. Um, also, we are having our national bishop here this Sunday, coming Sunday. He's gonna be the one speaking to us, not for long, cause he's very, have a lot on his plate, but he'll be here to recognize um, our core leadership team that has completed the study, um, of M D P. Um, I, I'm not sure, I think it was the first of that kind where there's twelve person who did it from a local church altogether. And so it was scour family worship center, they're doing a good job, continue to do it. And I just want to let you know that there are more work ahead, and it's good work in the sense that we really want people to come to Christ. And we want people not only to be visitors at church and visitors for them, we want them to become members of the church, uh, that they can be disciple, that they themselves become a disciple. So there's, the horizon is bright for this local church, so I'm just encouraging each and every one of you to get engaged, all right? God bless you, have yourself a wonderful, um, rest of the night and, um, hope it will stop snowing until it's winter. It's not winter, as if you have approximately sixteen some more to winter, and the snow comes so early. You know, I'm not a fan of the snow, but I give God thanks for the snow, you know? All right, um, good night, everyone. You have a wonderful night, and if needs be, reach out, if you need me, call me. I'm just a phone call away, all right? So good night, um, there's this number here, it's a virtual number, seven oh five four nine, um, four zero nine zero two one four. Whoever you are, thank you for coming on, we appreciate you. And all the numbers that I don't know. We appreciate you, and all the numbers that I don't know, um, thank you. Um, I wanna say thank you, good night to Sister Dessa, good night to Addison, good night to, uh, Sister Martin, Brasam, good night, Sister, uh, good night, Sister Cara, good night, Sister Dawn, Sister Jimmy. Good night, um, who's that? Okay, um, I'm going down the line, good night. Um, Sister Evadine Jones, good night. Um, iPhone five, oh, this is my friend Danny Distilts. We were achieving, you know, prior, I went and visited and, um, encouraged him. And, um, just pray for him that God will strengthen him and he will be healed from his illness, all right? Sister Pat Campbell, oh, how are you doing? Good night.
Good night.
Yes, very fancy, good night, Sister Sandra, Tamona, good night, Sister Turner, good night. Sister, Sister, um, Cynthia, where is Sister, um, Maranique?
Good night Pastor Gerald.
Good, hey, Sister Joan, good night, good night.
Good night, sir.
Yes, yes, um, good night, Sister Gray, Sister May, and, um, I like this name, Papu Aunt May, is that, did I do justice to that name, but good night, happy for coming on. Um, I don't see, oh, yeah. Good night, sir, how are you?
I am fine, we will talk, I'm a new, tonight is my first, and we will talk.
Okay, no problem. Looking forward to talking to you. Pardner? Brasam? Oh, I thought Brasam was saying something. Maranique? Give me your wave, Maranique. All right, Maranique, yes, little Cynthia. Good, all right, guys, have a good one, God bless you, and, um, see you at church on Sunday. Let us surprise the bishops.
Blessings, blessings, sir.
Yes, yes, Sister Pat Campbell, you wanna show your face?
Good night Pastor and family.
I didn't want it to my face, sir.
Because I just wanted to see my picture.
It's all right, never mind, I'll get you.
Sister Pat.
Yes, Bishop.
Uh, it's so good to see.
Good night, always, always Sister Walters.
Oh, thank God, she's doing well, thank the Lord.
Okay, okay, bless him.
Bless him.
I don't know why Pastor will have go pick at me, so.
Danny, good night, Danny, and good night, Sister Pat.
Why you love pick at me so much?
Yes, dear Danny, good, good. Why I love pick at you?
Yeah.
Cause maybe we're, we're in the same district.
And you're, you're and you're a faithful supporter to the prayer.
You started saying pastor.
Good night, everyone, have a good night's sleep, night, night.
Good night. Night, everyone.
All right, bye bye, guys.